We're going to call to order council meeting for October 4th, 2022 in the Harvey Hearing Room. Denise, can you call the roll, please?
Council Honig?
Here.
Council Fusillo?
Here.
Council Munson?
Here.
Council Belcher?
Here.
Council DeMarco? Council Placot?
Here.
Council Aiello? Vice President Regero?
Here.
President Wachere?
Here.
Thank you.
Please rise for the pledge led by Council Belcher.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I ask everybody to please remain standing. Just like to have a moment of silence for Alvin Chavez. Alvin was a U.S. Navy vet, has been in the town of Winter for 60 years. Has been an ardent supporter of Winter Public Schools, Winter Sports, is a fixture at the boys' and girls' hockey games for many, many years. Alvin was the husband, or still is, the husband of Karen Chavez, who has devoted a huge part of her life to this town, has been on committees, way too many to talk about right now, for the past four decades. I pray for their family. Not a lot of words to say. He was just a remarkable man, just a very genuine, loving Papa. The patriarch of that family. And my heart goes out to Karen and the family. And if everybody could just bow their head for a moment of silence. Minutes from September 20th, 2022's meeting have been circulated. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Council Belcher, second by Council Flacott. Any discussion on the motion? Any additions, deletions? Seeing none, are those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Or is no, the ayes have it. General information and recommendations? We do not have anything this evening. Public hearings, we have two. First public hearing I will open now is to transfer $139,500 from the Water and Store Capital Improvements Fund, engineering work, Rivest Street, Crest Ave., and Grover's Ave. That public hearing is now opened. Would anyone like to speak in favor of this? Director Calla.
Yes, this is one of the SRF-funded projects. It's imperative that we do this in the next calendar year to lead the way to our TIP project. We don't want to bury old infrastructure with a full roadway reconstruction on that leg of Rivest Street. Crest Ave also, you know, same age infrastructure, has some drainage issues. Grover's Ave, we've been trying to get done, you know, for a long time. They all tie together, which is why they're all together in the same infrastructure project. So it's an important project.
Council Fusillo, would you like to be heard on this?
Yeah, so we discussed this earlier. There were some questions about, you know, where this funding was coming from, stuff like that. So we had recently passed the loan for the actual project. Council Town Manager Marino explained that this is for, you know, the actual work being done. And the committee had a unanimous positive recommendation.
Thank you. Anybody else to be heard? Anyone on Zoom wish to be heard? Any other councilors? Seeing none, we will close that public. Council Regero, Vice President.
Could you just go over the scope of the project, Steve, one more time, so just for the folks living in that area? Crest Ave, obviously.
Sure. So what are you voting on tonight? That's for the engineering portion of the project?
Yep.
But the actual construction of the project is removal of some redundant mains on Rivest Street between McGee's Corner and Crest Ave. Tying over the current services from those mains that will be abandoned to the better 20-inch cast iron pipe that goes through there.
Okay.
The cast iron was, is a pipe that was cleaned and lined back in the 90s. So it's, you know, its integrity is good. The 10 and the 12, much older cast iron that are failing, that were never cleaned and lined. So remove those services, all the better water quality for residents. Like I said, there'll be drainage improvements and water main upgrades on Crest Avenue. And Grover's Ave is a failing water main.
So you're gonna rip it off the street, or is there a way?
This project will just be trench paved.
Okay.
You know, because we got the whole full reconstruction of the road following the year with the TIP project.
Okay, cool.
Anybody else in that public hearing? Council Munson?
Just timeline, as far as beginning and end, what would it look like?
So we're looking to get it advertised in the fall for a, and awarded, you know, during the winter months, probably, you know, end of January, awarded for a spring start. We're gonna need probably at least four to five months to get the project built. So you'll see construction, if we can start as early as April, wrapping up probably at the end of October.
Gotcha. Thank you. Anybody else wish to be heard? Seeing then, we will close that public hearing, we will take that up under old business. And we will open a new public hearing to transfer $241,000 from the Salary Reserve to the Winter Police Department budget for fiscal '20 through '22 collective bargaining agreement. There's been a settlement in police contract from fiscal '20, which is July 1st, 2019, through fiscal '22, which was up until June 30th of 2022. Town Manager Marino, do you wish to speak on this?
No, just, this is, as I announced before, this is one of the contracts, one of many that we're getting settled. Once we get this monies, these monies set aside and get the retro and the money's paid out, then we'll begin the next round of negotiations with both unions, the Lieutenant's Union and the, you know, Patrolmen and Sergeants Union. Looking forward to getting that going so we can start the next three-year cycle.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard on this? Council Fusillo?
Yes, so we, like I said before, we met earlier before this meeting. This is retroactive, being that it goes under bills that need to be paid. So with the Finance Committee had a positive unanimous recommendation for this as well.
And we will go over it under old business, but I'm assuming this money will be coming from reserve lines, which have been set aside in the budget. Anyone else wish to be heard on this? Anyone on Zoom? Any other councilors? Seeing none, we will close that public hearing and take that up under old business. We will now go through the first round of public comment, and before I do that, I will say that this is on Zoom. The ID number is 898-9430-8661 pound sign, and the phone number is 646-558-8656. So we will start in the room right now. Any public comment? Yes? Yes, John? Sorry.
Hi, Joe Morgan, Precinct 4. It's October again, and October is White Cane Awareness Month. White Cane Day is Friday, October 14th. It will be on Zoom. I don't have the information yet to put on the website, but if anyone's interested, the information that I do have is on the website regarding the white cane. This, if anyone doesn't know, is a white cane. I hate to say, but it's not a stick. It's not a walking stick. It's a white cane. This identifies me as a blind person, so that when I go to cross the street, they will stop and allow me to cross. That's all I have for right now. Thank you.
Thank you very much, John, and we will discuss that further down in public relations. Anyone else for public comment? Anyone on Zoom for public comment? Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi.
Hi.
Karina Campadaro, Precinct 3. I'm here tonight because I know you're going to discuss the proposals for the changes to the charter. And I just want to say, I think the founding fathers, the framers of the original document did a good job, and I don't think that certain changes should be made. First of all, I don't like the idea of removing the precinct councilors. I love having Hannah, as I'm in Precinct 3. She's doing a great job representing, you know, Precinct 3, Point Shirley interests, and reducing the size of the council and eliminating the precinct structure, I think, is not a good idea at all. I also do not agree with the making the Town Council President's term two years, four years instead of two years. I think we need more accountability, not less accountability, with our council members. As to changing the terms of the rest of the councilors, I leave that to you all. I know there's the, you have to balance the sort of idea of doing, going through the process every two years and running every two years versus whether people want to serve for more years. And I thank you all so much for being willing to serve. I appreciate you all, every single day, for doing this job, because I would not want to do it. But I do, I do not agree with changing the length, the term of the Town Council President, because if you do that, then only one half, and you leave the other councilors at four years, only one half of the councilors that are on the same cycle would be able to run for Town Council President, if you see what I'm saying? Like, if you left it at four and you've got the interlocking, not interlocking, but you'd go back and forth, if the Town Council President is on a four-year cycle with 1, 3, and 5, then 1, 3, and 5 can't run without giving up their own seats. And then the last provision that I don't agree with is the recall provision. I'm afraid that if you put that recall provision in with allowing one person to call for recall, no one's going to want to run. I mean, I'm not, I'm not offering to run anyway, but I think that would just scare off people. You have people that would be worried about their reputation for some wild person, just who had a vendetta, for example, against a particular counselor, could put that in there, could do the recall provision, and that counselor would have to worry about his professional or her professional reputation, et cetera. So that's all I had to say. Thank you all again very much for serving all the work you do.
Thank you. And using your words, as one of the founding fathers, I think we did do a good job.
Yes. We did. We admired you.
Thank you. And I'm sure we'll have more comment on this, but just to give people, I was going to do this a little later, a glimpse of how that will be handled. We will begin discussion tonight on this. The next meeting, and the second meeting, which we would also discuss later, is the Fall Forum. We will either continue again or wait until November. November, we will have a public hearing. We will also invite other founding fathers, past Charter Commission members, to get their input on it as well. So we will be getting tons of input. We will go over each item eventually. Each item will be voted on by the council. 99, well, each item will require a six, a supermajority, so six yes votes. At that point, 95% of them will then have to go to the state legislature for their blessing, approval. Then they would come back, if there were six votes, and went to the state and came back. Then it would come back and it would have to be on a regularly scheduled town election. So, you know, the thought is it would be done by next November, but it wouldn't be voted on, whatever ones ended up going to the ballot would be voted on November of But there will be ample time notches tonight. Nobody's voting tonight on anything, and we're going to get ample input from as many citizens as we can. But thank you for your comments. Other public comments? Yes?
Hi, my name is Celeste Rivera Hewitt. I'm from River Road. I'd like to echo the sentiment. I do oppose doing away with the precinct councilors for obvious reasons. That represents an impact to the democratic process and runs the risk of having a very small segment of the population. If everybody on the same street decided they wanted to run, they could be elected, and then the rest of the town is represented. Thank you for answering my question. I was wondering about whether or not it would go to a referendum vote. But the further question that I have, and I hope to hear more discussion tonight, is what is motivating these votes in this conversation? I think some of these things, it's common sense to avoid them. I didn't think about the overlapping, kind of the coinciding councilors that are coinciding with the council president being locked out, so that's really important. But I'm really curious to hear a little bit more. I don't necessarily see a reason for change on any of these fronts, so I just didn't hear any more. But I do want to register my opposition to the lengthening of the council president and to doing away with the district councilor.
And just to try to answer a couple, which we don't always, it's just small conversation, but an input, but regardless, if it's four or two years, and I'm not saying if I agree or disagree, there's always going to be an overlap with councilors, depending on how it is. So that, you know, but there's still plenty of reasons to agree with your assessments. As far as why, this is, the Ordinance Review Committee goes through a charter on a regular basis, usually an integral, a five-year integral process. And then they go through the whole charter. There's some changes, I think, as simple as, you know, budgetary items that, when we did the charter, we just didn't realize that it doesn't work in terms of timing and when the town manager presents us to a budget as to how far we have to, before we vote on it. So some really relatively minor stuff like that, to just get the date right, that it works. And then some more, you know, definitely more, more requests that would have a significant impact on the charter. So that's, I'm not sure if I answered all your questions or not, but, so yeah, it is still going to be a process. It would, whatever passes the council still has to go before the count, except on a change like the budget. If it's timing that we said, oh, we want to get the budget on May 1st instead of March 1st, that is something we could do. Next question, public comment? Yes?
Lee Foley, Precinct 2. Yeah, I agree with what Celeste and Karina just said. I would have to say that one of my biggest concerns is the recall question. Where's it coming from? Is voting every two years for a counselor not like a recall? We don't reelect someone if they're not doing a job? And what's the bar for that? To me, it seems like opening the door for frivolous, frivolous requests for someone to leave if they didn't make you vote the way you wanted them to. And what is a citizen's initiative? I mean, that just, to me, is just wide open to, that could be very dangerous in terms of like, you know, is that going to cost us money too? Like, how is that going to happen? If somebody is sworn in, a week later votes something that's controversial and is not liked, then they're facing a recall right away? I mean, to me, I think the bar should be very high for that and should be very clearly defined.
Thank you. And, you know, I don't want to give my opinions without the other councilors, but I will say, if it, if something was a two-year term, I don't even think it would, it would make no sense to have a recall, right? Because I think, I think a recall would have to start, I don't know if it's a year, whatever it is, into it. But anyway, thank you. I agree with you.
And Lee, we did see your email today. Okay. Yeah.
Any other public comments? Any public comment on Zoom?
No, sir.
All right, we'll have a second round. All right, closed public comment. Correspondents, Denise?
Yes, we had Julia Wallace, who was very happy that we're considering the Community Preservations Act. Scott Mahoney Wright did write an email to the Town Council looking for answers on some OML questions, which we will be answering him. Lee Foley, who received your email today. Tom Riley, who received an email also on the ORC. And Fusillo Mialios has a question, which we are not discussing yet this evening, about the BOH annual keeping of the properties, but he already loaded to the Town Council discussing that. That'll be brought back up when we talk about that.
All right. All right, committee report. Rules and ordinance in joint meeting with finance.
Council Fusillo?
Take it away.
All right, so the joint committee met last Thursday night for about an hour and a half to talk trash. We, literally. We were joined by Wendy Malapage, who is our solid waste administrator.
Director.
Manager, thank you. I'm not good with titles, so I appreciate it. We had a relatively productive meeting. We hadn't talked about this topic for a while, so I think it was important that we kind of level set. We reviewed some of the questions that we had flipped to the town manager some time ago, and we want to just follow up, I think, at our next meeting and try to get some of those questions and answers ironed out. We drew some informal consensus. I think we were, I think we're very interested in setting an abatement program for those that can demonstrate a significant financial hardship, so that's something that we want to, you know, continue to look at. We, I think, drew some common ground on how to manage the enterprise fund and really where that, where that really lies, and is that an administrative decision or a council decision? I think we kind of landed with it being more of an administrative decision, just like the water bill, just like a lot of the other enterprise funds. And we're on the same page, that we want to get, you know, something enforced very quickly. We've all received feedback from people in the public saying that, you know, it's not fair, I'm putting out my one barrel, but someone's putting out more or less or whatever have you. And so I think once we start enforcing, whether it's the Board of Health Regulation that's currently in play, or a combination of that regulation or whatever ordinance we put together, you know, I think that's really something that we're looking to do very, relatively soon. And we're going to set a meeting in the coming weeks that, something that works with the town manager's schedule, Steve's schedule, if you'd like to join us, and the six councilors on that committee, so, joint committee, so.
So two-thirds of the council.
Yeah, two-thirds, yeah.
Thank you. And it is, I mean, some people think it's a long time in coming, but it is, you know, the goal of, I believe, the goal of the town would be, fairly to say, is to have less trash going up. You know, that's the goal, to reduce the tonnage. It's good for the environment, it's good for the town, everybody wins. So that's the goal. And whatever we can do to try to make that happen, I think, is important. And I do think that, you know, like the Vice President said, that this will be coming soon, that we can start basically enforcing what the contract says and to find a mechanism. There's, I have a meeting with the town manager tomorrow to go over some of this stuff also, and with the Vice President's help and Council Fusillo and their committees, we hope to be able to bring this to fruition in the very near future. So thank you again for that and for doing such a great job. You get to go again for rules and ordinance.
Thank you, yeah. Rules and ordinances met last night for about two hours in the Lyceum Room, and we had a hybrid meeting. And that was, it actually went very well, and I know for us councilors, I mean, we had a hybrid meeting set up with a laptop and we kind of brought it all, and it worked out. And so I think, you know, if that's something that other committee chairs want to do, it did work, and I thought it was, you know, John and Council Munson, Council DeMarco, feel free to disagree, but I thought it actually worked out for our purposes last night, and another option. Anyways, we talked about the Center Business District signage and what we want to put on the signs. We were joined by about a dozen business owners. I thank Betsy Shane from the Chamber for circulating the meeting to the CBD business owners, because really, we wanted to hear from the folks down there who were living it and experiencing it day to day. We identified a few pain points, but one of the most notable ones was that there are vehicles being parked in front of businesses for extended periods of time, talking days, overnight. And that's been a burden to the businesses. It's tough for customers to get in and out. It's tough for deliveries to be made. And so that's something that we want to take a look at. That coupled with the MAPC recommendation that came out prior to the construction, I think the pain point that was identified and the goals that were set out by the MAPC recommendation actually overlapped and drew some common ground. The MAPC recommendation says to have a uniformed parking enforcement schedule, you know, so that it's not, you know, two hours here, one hour here, three hours there, and it just gets kind of confusing. So something uniformed, and that's sort of what I think we had discussed last night. And so we were joined by Mike DiLuise, who is the Chair of TSAC and also the Town Hearing Officer, and his expertise was also very much appreciated in that discussion. So follow-up steps, talk with the town manager and the police chief about what is actually enforceable in terms of center parking. We don't want to waste our time spinning our wheels and implementing something if it can't actually be enforced. So that's our next step, and then we're going to circle back up with the more formal recommendation in writing for the community to take a look at and hopefully for a vote, so.
Thank you. And this is something, I'm sure the DPW director would agree with me, that we'd like to get done as soon as possible, and I think a uniform time is fine. I do obviously travel that road a lot, and early in the morning, it's just, it is amazing, because I've been trying to go through the center just to take a look. And, you know, if I go there between 6:30 and quarter to 7:00, and there are between six and seven cars out between CVS and Sweats. And that's obviously the two residential properties that are there that don't have driveways. So, you know, that's something that, you know, they have to use the municipal lots during the day, obviously be able to park overnight, and that's, that's where it becomes sticky.
Yeah, and you just reminded me, that's another point that we thought, that came up last night. It was not just, you know, if we're going to do something in the Center Business District that may affect residents, we need an alternative. And the municipal lot, or updating, refreshing, and seeing if it's realistic, but taking a look at our municipal lot ordinance so that there is a reasonable alternative for residents to park in, or if you are going to be doing something down the center that's longer than a couple hours, you have an alternative so that you're not getting a ticket. There is municipal parking space in a few different areas, and thank you for bringing that up, because that, these two kind of go hand in hand. We also had one item on the agenda last night. We took up the, we had a sort of a cleanup motion that needed to be made for the ORC stuff, and I circulated that information to the council just before the meeting. I apologize, I wish it was sooner, but I, work today, so.
No excuse, work. Thank you again, Vice President Regero. Council Fusillo, Finance.
Yes, like I said earlier, we met before this meeting, two of which, two of the items were discussed under public hearings. However, we had four items on the agenda. The police union retro payment, the establishment of the compensated absences reserve fund, a motion for a planning department intern, and the water main project design and engineering appropriation. All four of these motions came out of the Finance Committee with unanimous positive recommendations.
Thank you, and we will take up most of them in old business. Town managers' report.
Thank you, Council President. I do have a quick presentation I'll do at the end with regard to CPA as promised, but I want to go through some other items first, if that's okay?
Yes.
The ADA grant application was due September 30th, if that did go in, thanks to Rachel Kelly for all her hard work on that, and also Steve Calla and the library director. We got all, two applications in, two projects. One is 20 sidewalks to make accessible. We've got about 45 left to do to add the, you know, little rumble strips and make them accessible. So we've got 20 of them we put in for, and also two lifts at the library to make that building completely accessible. So we'll see if we get lucky with those, but we expect a pretty quick turnaround, as December usually is when we hear back. So more to follow on that, but we did get the applications in on time. Working with the, you know, Betsy Shane and downtown and Council President with regard to the tree lighting ceremony that we'll do in the event we'll have the day after, Friday after Thanksgiving?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, so we're looking at potentially a fake Christmas tree to put in French Square, potentially 20 feet tall, so we're looking at options for that, and, you know, lighting up some of the other trees in the area, so looking forward to a fun event there. Speaking of events, I attended several great events in the last couple of weeks. This Council on Aging cookout, sponsored by the Police and the Fire Department, went great, so thank you to them for having that. The Veterans Event we had Saturday morning, kind of meet your Veterans Agent, we did that over at the E.B. Newton Building, that was well-attended. Thank you for that, and Phil Verona for setting that up. Obviously, Oktoberfest Sunday was a huge hit, so thanks to everybody who worked hard on that. And then also John had invited me to a vision group over at the COA, and I had a great meeting with that group. Learned a lot of stuff that I didn't know already. So a lot of resources that the state has and things like that. So I appreciate that meeting as well. I will be on vacation for the second meeting in October, 11/15. I will be available by Zoom if you need me. I can certainly zoom in, but I will be away on the 11/15 meeting. Also, there's, you've got a draft on the town council website for a committee handbook. I think it was started back in 2020, never maybe approved. I think we might want to rehash that and put that out there. We've had some, you know, just to get it out there for some of the newer committee members and all the boards and committees. So that can be not a draft anymore and a final. And that can follow up with maybe a memo. We could look to do that and maybe put it on an upcoming agenda if possible. Well, there's been some concern and questions about vehicles. We do have some older vehicles lower in the parking lot behind Four Kids Only there, the municipal lot. We are working on a product called Municipid. And that is, allows us to put, it's almost like eBay for municipal vehicles. You put it out there with a price and people will bid on it up to a certain timeframe. And then we get rid of the vehicles that way. I've done this a few times with, you know, RFPs is another option to do it. But you tend to get more money on Municipid. RFPs tends to sell them for the short price. So you tend to do a little bit better when you put them out that way. So we're looking, there's some school vans, a couple of DPW vehicles, some fire stuff. So we're looking to get rid of those vehicles and clear that lot out. So more to follow, but we're working on that. With that, if you wouldn't mind loading up the PowerPoint?
Well, that's loading. I'll just mention a few things because it'll take a couple of minutes here. One is I was able to attend last Wednesday the groundbreaking for the Northeast Vocational School, which was a great event and is going to be a, just a beautiful building. So much more to come on that. And I also reached out to Senator Edwards yesterday. I noticed coming into Winthrop, maybe last week, up in Bennetton Street, making the right into Winthrop over the bridge at the heights. The no turn on red sign is back and active and was causing a lot of traffic jams. So I did ask her to potentially look into that for the, for the town of Winthrop. And she was a big proponent of removing that sign. She was not sure why it was put back up. So hopefully more to come on that, too. Just a few quick things. Council Flocke?
Yeah. Could I ask the town manager a question? Last week, Paul Lizardo from Swet, Swet Liquor asked about the flower beds and whether somebody was going to be taking care of them. Has that been dealt with?
We're still working on that with Director Calla. We need to, you know, obviously we're coming out of the season now, so we'll clean them up. But as we go into next season, we plan to have, you know, work to have a plan in place to take care of those long term. So yeah, that's on our agenda.
Council President, if I may?
Yes.
Did you say October 15th you're not going to be here?
November, sorry. I apologize. I meant November 15th, yeah.
Can't wait to get out of here.
Yeah, no, I will be here for the fall forum. Yes, I'm not missing anything. November 15th, yeah. apologize if I wasn't clear on that.
Vice President Ruggiero.
Thank you. One other piece of feedback that we got from our meeting last night that I said I'd mention today is the handicap spot in the center that the signage may be not aligned with the actual spot itself in front of.
Yeah, there's one spot in front of, for kids only that's going to be blacked out.
Okay. I just want to show where we're aware of that and was brought up at the other meeting, yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Why don't you just begin slideshow up top? I think up top there's a tab that says slideshow, begin slideshow. Maybe Steve, which one is it? From the beginning? There you go. Thank you. All right, so you can go to the first slide. So my understanding, Community Preservation Act, I've had some experience with this. The town on the South Shore that I worked for for 10 years, we had this, did a lot of great projects with it. I believe in it. I think it's a great asset that the state provides for a lot of communities. You know, it's one of those things that needs a vote of the town to bring it forward. I can just, the first slide there, I'm sorry. So what is the Community Preservation Act? It's a smart growth tool that the state puts out that helps communities preserve open space, historic sites, create affordable housing and develop outdoor recreational facilities. CPA also helps strengthen state and local economies by expanding housing opportunities and construction jobs with the Commonwealth workforce and by supporting the tourism industry through preservation of Commonwealth's historic and natural resources. Next slide. What can CPA funds be used for? Basically allows you to create, if voted in, allows you to create a local community preservation fund for open space protection, historic preservation, affordable housing, like I said, outdoor recreation. And community preservation money is raised locally through an imposition of a surcharge that'll show up on the tax bill if voted of not more than 3%. Doesn't have to be 3%, you know, some communities do one, one and a half, two, three, but it can't exceed 3%. And it goes against, and I'll get into the numbers and how it would be, you know, your average tax bill, what it would look like. To date, 189 municipalities in the Commonwealth have adopted CPA. And for this current fiscal year, now the matching percentage from the state. So you could generate, you know, you collect a bunch of monies and then the state will match those funds. Those are varied. When this first came out, it was high upwards, you know, 50, 60%. It's dropped down over the years. Now it's back up to 35%. That's the current year's funding percentage. Next slide, please. So the CPA matching funds, where do they come from? So there is a trust fund revenues and they derive from the surcharge placed on all real estate transactions at the state's registry deeds. The surcharge for most documents filed at the registries is $50. And those funds are immediately deposited into CPA trust fund and then held at the Department of Revenue. So a lot of, you know, every real estate transaction in Winthrop is actually going into this fund. Next. So the impact to your average taxpayer. Currently coming up for FY '23, your median home value, assessed home value for, in Winthrop is $625,000. According to the CPA rules, automatically, before it's, you know, you hit with your assessment, they take $100,000 exemption off of your tax bill. So your value of 625 immediately drops to 525. And then you figure out your taxes, you know, divided by 1,000 and then times 1176. And that gets you, your tax bill is 6176. Based on that, depending upon what percentage you get, you know, either 1%, surcharge, one and a half, two or three, and you can see the corresponding values there. And these are annual. So if the town voted in a 1%, you know, the person that has a $6,100 tax bill would get a bill for, you know, additional surcharge broken out into four quarterly payments, 6176 divided by four. And that would show up on the quarterly tax bills. And then so on and so forth on down for the percentages. Now, as far as total potential for the town, I didn't include this here, but on the slides anyway, but I have the numbers. Based on our current value of the town and, you know, less than 100%, if we had already adopted CPA and even at the 1% value, based on our current values in the town, we would have collected $286,488. You know, approximate within a few dollars here or there. And then the state match on that would be an additional $100,000 to put us right around $386,000, which is what we would have collected this year, just at a 1%. You know, 2%, one and a half was up to 429, 2% 572. And if you did 3%, that'd be $859,000 for, available for projects. Then you add the 35% state match on top of that. Next slide. So what type of projects could we fund, you know, if we had CPA funds? Historic renovation of town buildings, i.e. the E.B. Newton Building and/or Town Hall. Recreational field work to include playgrounds. I went actually today and looked at a bunch of towns and projects that they had done. I mean, there's, you know, basketball court resurfacing, potential, you know, football field, i.e. Miller Field, resurfacing. All sorts of different playgrounds, taking out older, you know, playgrounds that are defunct and putting in, you know, new playgrounds for the kids, things like that. All those are eligible for CPA fund usage. I did a project in my old town on the South Shore where we did a few, a bunch of historic gravestones. We used the CPA funds to restore all of those. You know, those are projects that you can use for that. Create affordable housing, purchase land to preserve as open space. And then potentially, you know, trail funding, you know, I know we got the Greenway Project coming up, things like that. Those would all be eligible for CPA use. Next slide. So next steps. I had a long conversation with the folks over at the Community Preservation Office today. You know, they recommended we create a Community Preservation Study Committee. And if the council wants to proceed, decide, you know, when to bring the ballot question to the voters. Now, they've got a lot of data on this. They've been doing this for over 20 years. You know, what they don't recommend, and based on the data, and this is, you know, what Boston does, they recommend that you either go on a midterm election and/or a presidential election. So the next one available to us would be FY '24. They say other towns have chosen to ignore that advice and they, you know, will either go on an annual spring election or, you know, for us, we've got the election next November. You know, we could do that. But they say the best chance for success for a project like this is to do it at either a midterm or a presidential election. And the data they've got, you know, backs that up, so. And then obviously decide what CPA surcharge percentage. Most communities now that are going for this, like Boston did this back in 2016, they did it at 1%. At least then the gentleman at Community Preservation said, most towns are doing 1% or 1.5% right now. And then obviously if we're doing this, conduct public forums, present to the residents, answer questions, you know, and go from there. I mean, obviously it's extra money in your tax bill. Nobody wants to see that. But, you know, with the matching funds and, you know, projects we got coming up, this just seems to make a lot of sense. And that was all I had and certainly open for questions.
Thank you. Town managers have been talking about this with me for a long time. And I, you know, it's, it gives us the ability to do a lot of stuff that we just don't have the resources to do now. And I think the town manager said fiscal '24, you know, talking fiscal '25 technically, but November of 2024 would be probably when you would, when we would be looking to bring this to the town. So still a couple of years away. Council Flocke?
Thank you, Council President. This, I think it would be outside the two and a half increase.
Correct. It's a surcharge, it's not a tax, yep. I mean, it's on your tax bill and you can argue the merits of that, but it's called a surcharge, yeah. It's still an increase on your tax bill, but it's called a surcharge, yeah. It's outside of the levy and the general fund and all that.
Council Belcher?
Well, we need to submit projects for approval to the state.
Yep. Now, no, you, you let them know what you spent it on. So there's a requirement, you know, we get into percentage, but you have to do 15% for a sur, you know, 15% for, you know, recreation, 15% for, you know, there's, you know, creating housing. There's a certain percentage. Then whatever's left over from there, you can use whatever you want. But you do report back to them.
So you report back, but you don't need approval before you?
Right. You would set up a community preservation committee and then they would make recommendations to the council and then the council would authorize the projects, so.
Thank you.
Council Munson?
Thank you, President Lotteri. Do you have to spend it all in each year? Or could you accumulate it to spend?
You accumulate it and carry it over.
Something big upcoming?
Right. And the other benefit, which I didn't bring up, I'll get into as we get into the details. But you're also, you, you know, once you adopt all these provisions, you can actually bond against the money. You know, so now you can do a larger scale project, say, and a lot of towns do that. The prior town I was in spent $6 million creating ball fields. And then they use the CPA funds to pay the, you know, the principal on interest payments on those loans. So a lot, it gives you some flexibility.
All right. Thank you very much. And we'll hear more about this in the future. School Department report. School Department, we met last night. And the major topic of conversation was the settlement of the teacher's contract. There are seven bargaining units within the schools. So the teachers are one of those seven, but obviously by far the biggest of those seven. They did just settle a three-year contract going from fiscal '23 through fiscal '25. Has some little characteristics to it, but basically it's a 2-2-2, which basically mirrors the contracts that have been settled by the town on the municipal side. The town, the school committee also discussed, as the town manager did, the surplusing of vehicles up in the old DPW lot. And are excited to be able to get those vehicles out of there, as are we and I'm sure many residents in town. That was it on the school department report.
Council President, if I could just add one more thing? On the CPA thing, I forgot to bring it up, but I was reminded by former council president Ron Vecchia today. The last time this was brought up, you know, Winthrop was back when you were still a selectboro, you know, board of selectmen. And he said it lost, but it lost by a close margin. So I just, this isn't the first time Winthrop's seen this. So it did bring back it. Before you created the town council, former government, it was put to the ballot back then as well.
Thank you.
All right, old business. Trash Enterprise Fund, Trash Abatement, Trash Enforcement. We did hear from Rules and Ordinance that we will keep it as a placeholder on the agenda.
Yep. And looking to set up a meeting in the next few weeks with the appropriate town, town administration to push this thing along.
Okay. I'm going to go out of order a little to give a little more time. DCR presentation, I had, through Denise, I had, we had sent an email to Dick Hickey from DCR. And I had asked to have someone come before us, come before the council to give us information on access to the beach, especially up by Locust Street, where they took stairs out, they promised to put stairs back, and they're still not there. So, and just a, a basic beach cleanup. You know, we understand there's a lot of things that can't be touched at the beach, but there are a lot of things that can be touched and cleaned up. And I would like to ask for them to do that and give us a clarification on that. So they hopefully will be at a meeting in November, is what he has promised us. Couple of financial motions we'll take. Town council transfer $241,000 from salary reserve to W., Winthrop Police Department budget for fiscal 2022 collective bargaining agreement. Council Fusillo, that came out of committee with positive recommendation?
Yes.
All right, that does not require a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will ask for a roll call vote, please.
Council Honan?
Yes.
Council Fusillo?
Yes.
Council Munson?
Yes.
Council Belcher?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council Flocke?
Yes.
Council Ayello? Vice President Ruggiero?
Yes.
President Lotteri?
Yes. There's a motion that the town council vote to appropriate $139,500 in Watersaw Capital Improvement Fund, 966, to pay for design and engineering work for the SRF Water Main Project on Revere Street, Crest Ave and Grover's Ave, or take any other action relative thereto. Council Fusillo, that came out with positive recommendation?
Yes, it did.
It does not require a second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Council Honan?
Yes.
Council Fusillo?
Yes.
Council Munson?
Yes.
Council Belcher?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council Flocke?
Yes.
Council Ayello? Vice President Ruggiero?
Yes.
President Lotteri?
Yes. There's a motion that the town council vote to transfer $2,400 from Finance Department's salary line to the Planning Department Consulting Line to pay for a graduate student intern to help with new GIS implementation throughout town departments or take any other actions relative thereto. Council Fusillo?
Positive recommendation from the Finance Committee.
There's, coming out of Finance with positive recommendation, does not require a second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it. Town council vote to accept provisions of Chapter 40, Section 13D of the Mass General Laws establishing the Compensation Absence Reserve Fund. As a reserve fund effective fiscal year 2023, or take any other action relative thereto. Council Fusillo?
Came out of committee with a positive recommendation.
Came out with a positive recommendation, this does not require a second. This is again to establish, we had discussed at the last meeting, to establish a fund to cover our, to make sure we're addressing our potential liability with sick time buyback and such. Coming out of committee with a positive recommendation, does not require a second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it. Counselor, Vice President Ruggiero, on the discussion on the CBD parking requirements, you'd like to keep that in committee?
Yep, same sort of thing. We drew consensus, it seems like, but want to just have a discussion with the administration before coming back with any comment.
Okay, great. And now we'll go to the ordinance review committee recommendations. Now, this is again the very beginning of the process on the council level. We've gone through six months on the ORC committee. We've gone through another, almost a month on the, on the Rules and Ordinance. I think Vice President Ruggiero is, can't wait for this to be over. But just in terms of meeting length and everything else.
No comments.
But anyway, so I will ask first if there's, if Vice President would like to go over what, what has been done in the subcommittee.
Yep. So we met four or five times for our, yeah, I wasn't counting the hours, but, you know. We went through each item that was presented to us, all 13 recommendations. I circulated the result of those discussions earlier today. But, you know, I think a couple of things. One is these are recommendations from a subcommittee. As we know, any council can make any motion on the council floor, as long as it receives a second. You know, that works, too. The, the motions that we, that we made, related to the content, were, you know, were vetted within our subcommittee. We did receive some public feedback during our subcommittee meetings. But I wouldn't say that we learned anything, well, I'll speak for myself. Having heard from the ORC and having sat in the subcommittee, I mean, there's a lot of the same discussion, a lot of the same conversation. Having served in the prior ORC, a lot of the same points are made on a lot of the same issues. So, you know, it's coming to a head now and, and here we are. So I bucketed the So, I bucketed these as easily as possible, but you really need to review this in tandem with the report that was submitted to us by the ORC Chair Mark Chapdellane, in order to know exactly what the recommendations are. But simply put, the, the non-ordinance, non-charter recommendations were accepted. Those were sort of just general recommendations about general town operations that were encouraged to be reviewed, and if the council has a place to take action, then we can take action. So those were accepted. The, there was one ordinance-specific recommendation that we're positively recommending for further investigation and opinion by the town manager in legal. That's the removal of the use variance. And again, that's, that's an ordinance, it's not a charter thing, so we have some flexibility about how we wanna handle that. The charter motions that were positively recommended were, was the one related to the abandonment clause, the one related to multiple member bodies choosing their own chairperson, one related to the charter just being the binding document of the town, one related to the filling of vacancies of public elected bodies. You know, should the council vote, and the school committee, when there's a vacancy on the school committee, yes or no? The recommendation was, no, the council shouldn't, and that passed out of committee as well. There were two motions that passed related to the timing of the language in the budget, and there was also a motion that was made, wasn't a motion, but a recommendation from the ORC to accept the change proposed by the Collins Center during the prior ORC. Last, there was a motion that amended the first recommendation, which discussed the composition of the council, and it was amended to read that the only part of the recommendation that was being accepted was the one changing the term of office for councilors from four years to two years. That's councilors, not the council president. Not all of these passed unanimously in committee. I didn't share the, you know, I think a lot of them are two to one. There were a few that were three to oh, but, you know, there's still discussion to be had. So I guess I'll just leave it there for now, just sort of summarizing the stuff that we've talked about the past couple of months.
Thank you. And it is a pretty involved process, and again, thank you in your committee. And I'm gonna give the, the chairperson of the ordinance review, I believe is here, I can't see without my glasses, yes. So I will give him a few minutes too, just to go over and maybe address a couple of the questions, just to kind of give why you got to where you were, what was the driving force, what was the goal? What was the reasoning for recommending changes? And I will also address another question that was brought up by Council Ayello, who's unable to be here this evening, questioning something I had said back in January and in February. And we had received a, obviously, the way, and I feel like I've said this countless times, but the way the charter works is there are review processes that happen on the years ending in zero and five, basically, for easy. And there was a, the previous council president established a committee in twenty twenty, which would have been by the charter ending in zero and five. During that committee, during that time, COVID came. We also had a special election, which involved the chairman of the ORC along with the, another member of the ORC. The ORC, so I, I did get an opinion dated January third, which was on a bunch of questions, since I had, was just coming in, I had a bunch of questions on various items, and got a legal opinion on those and this, saying that, yes, we're within our right to do one or two things. You know, continue the committee, try to get the old committee back together, or start a new committee. I chose to start a new committee, which we did. Then Council Ayello further had questions because it was his thought that they, there was a report submitted. So his thought was that one of the reasons, obviously COVID, obviously the special election, but the other re, another reason that KP had mentioned was that the town, you know, since we didn't complete their task, basically, so we're trying to replicate, repeat the task, complete the task. So Council Ayello had an objection with that and wanted further clarification because there was a report that was generated by the past ORC. I believe the report stated May third, twenty twenty-one. Looked back at minutes from May, two meetings in May and one meeting in June, and it was discussed. There was a report done. We went to the chairman of the Rules and Ordinance of the past ORC, who stated that he said many times that the committee definitely did not feel that they had the ability to complete their task as designated. There wasn't, there was a, there's a provision that says they have to submit a report, they submitted a report. That report was never voted on by the town council, and it was brought up in June by Vice President Ruggiero, not Vice President Ruggiero at the time, but Council Ruggiero at the time, that asked that we let, that, you know, that basically stated again, with the chairman of the committee had stated, that they would request time until the end of the year. So they're, they're requesting more time in June, and Council Ayello was under the impression that they finished in May. So then it was not brought up again at any council meeting for the rest of the year. So anyway, I have another opinion cost us more money from KP Law, and I will distribute to the council later. So the bottom line is, we are well within our rights to do this. And again, since January, February, September, and October, I will say it again, that we are well within our rights to do this. Having said all that, and again, I think, you know, again, I don't wanna give my feedback. There are things in here that I think are good ideas, there are things in here that I don't agree with. And, and I think that's the whole point of this, right, to try to make it a more perfect document. It is, I think it was said that, you know, and I think we did. It's amazing that, you know, this started twenty years ago, I think, and we, we as a charter commission sat in meetings for two years at the, at the Gorman Ford Bank School in the old multipurpose room. And a, a lot of it is cut and paste, right? I mean, you can't just reinvent the wheel. And at the time, I think there were only thirteen communities in the Commonwealth that had this current form of government that we had. And we had a very good consultant that helped us do a lot of this. But it was times taken, and we did try to think of everything, and you just don't, you just can't. I mean, there's so many things that come up. I mean, the goal, I think, when we talk about what are the goals of this ordinance review committee, I think the goals of the charter commission was to try to create a more fluid, transparent form of government that could get things done in a more timely manner. And I, and I think for the most part, we've, we've done that. I mean, is things always perfect? No. Do the councilors always agree on everything? No. But that's just the way life is. But I think everybody at this table cares about what's best for Winthrop, and I think everybody cares about what's best for Winthrop, or we wouldn't be living here. So I think it's, it's not a perfect document, but I think it's a very good document, and I think it has stood the test of some time. And so this is now the fourth committee that's been established for this. So I would just ask the chairman, again, not to spend a ton of time, but just to give us, as council president, I'm looking as to what incited you to make some of these decisions? Like, what was the driving force to try to make a couple of these? Some of them are pretty obvious, but even, you know, the one I still don't understand is the use variance, which can, has been explained to me fifteen times, and I know it's supposedly a good thing, but I still don't understand it. But what drove you to make some of these recommendations? Like, there had to be a goal behind it.
First, thanks for the opportunity to serve on this committee. We spent twenty Wednesdays going through the charter and most of the rules and ordinances. So it was certainly something that we took very seriously. We had great attendance of this committee. And like I said, we went through every line of the charter, certainly. So the use ordinance, I'll start there, it's probably the easiest one to, to go through. A use variance, a variance is when, when you seek relief for a, for, from zoning, a zoning bylaw, a zoning regulation in order to do something. You wanna build a house on a land that, that has some hardship, topography, shape, size, and as a result, you, you need to go closer to the lot line than the, the bylaws allow, dimensional regulations allow. You can go to the Board of Appeals and you can seek a variance from the bylaws, provided it's not a substantial detrimental, detriment to the, the neighborhood. They can make the decision, and it's, it's based on a hardship. A use variance is a separate subset of that variance. So we're not suggesting taking away variances, tho, those are necessary, and we're not looking to disturb. The use variance, however, that is where somebody that has a two-family home could petition the ZBA to have a six-family apartment. Now, it's not just your own property rights of somebody with a two-family that wants to make it a six-family. It, it's the property rights of the neighbors that we need to consider too. That you're buying into a neighborhood, you're buying into a street, and that you have a, should have a reasonable belief that it's gonna stay the way it was when you bought there. Now, certainly, if somebody wanted to take that same two-family house and turn it into six apartments, they could go through a process still. They could, they could change the zoning. They could go before the planning board for recommendation. They could go by for this elected body, and they could say, we wanna change our zoning. We wanna change our zoning from residential to multi-use, or, or from residential to high-rise apartment. And this board can make the determination, an elected board, a board that's very much out front. Whereas now, it would be the, the ZBA would, three members of the ZBA would make that decision. That would affect the whole neighborhood potentially. So it just makes the process more transparent, and that's the whole purpose. I think it's important to note that there's only thirteen communities that have use variances currently on their books. And one of them, Bridgewater, has just voted this year to remove theirs from their books. So they're down, we're now one of twelve communities that, that allow this. And Mass General Laws does require that, that for use variances to be allowed in a town, the bylaws have to expressly state and provide for use variances. So it was the belief that it would add significant more transparency to, to eliminate use variances, and it would make development a, a little bit more open and, and a little bit better for the community. It's not gonna stop development, it's just gonna slow it down, so that we're not putting up monstrosity somewhere, and then for the next forty years, we're looking at it and saying, wow, how did that get there? At least we'll know how it got there. To go back to the size and the scope of the, the town council, I think that's the biggest one we've heard about. We looked at these from problem, what could the possible solution be? The, the problem we saw was, was that there wasn't enough participation i, in people wanting to run. Now, i, is it because of the, the difficulty that your job is? Quite possibly that no one would want it. But we also looked at it as, what if there were two qualified people in the same district, in the same precinct? How does that work? Or, or what could we do to incentivize it, to make it better? One would be through pay, though we really got nowhere quick on that, and we'd leave that to, to the town council to, to deal with the pay of, of town councilors. But the second part was the term. So for a, for a councillor to see a, a four-year term, it seemed like it was too long of a term. That you, you're a first-time councillor, you get in there and, and you're stuck in for a four-year ride. And it's difficult to know where you're gonna be in four years of whether or not it's, it's a job you'd wanna take. The other side of it was, was the town council president. We have a town council president sitting for two years, and when those two years are up, they gotta go into another race for, for a town council president. And if it's contested, it's, it's difficult to do. What we saw was, and what we, we seem to, as a group, come up with was, if we had a longer town council president term, it would allow some of these bigger projects to get done. Something like the middle school wouldn't necessarily still be there as a semi-vacant building. A, a prior town council president would have likely had the time to, to kind of bring a, a policy like that to fruition. It also brings better accountability. So by having two-year councillors and a four-year town council president, you would essentially have a midterm election for that town council president. What more of a referendum could you have on a town council president than to have your entire council under you being up for reelection? And, and that was the way we, we kind of rationalized that. To go to a three-year can't be done because we're technically a city, and we don't qualify to have a spring election. So we, we can't have that three-year term. We're, we're really stuck with either two or four. I think everyone would agree that three would probably have been ideal. The, the four-year current term, as I mentioned, it just seemed awful long. The four-year term, though, for councillors, does have a very good benefit in that we can stagger it. We could have half the council up every two years, and you do have better continuity. So there is a value there, but, but I, I think the vote of the, the ORC ultimately was that, that the, the benefit of having more opportunity for somebody to come in and, and run every two years would be better. Now, the, the big one here is the, the at-large. We studied the pros and cons. We, we reached out to past town council presidents, we, members of the, the prior charter committees. And the at-large question is a real difficult one on both sides of it. The, the pros of, of having an all-at-large is that Winthrop is a very unique community. We're a small place. We're not a giant city like Lowell that failed at having an all-at-large council. In Winthrop, the problems that happened in precinct two are the same problems that happened in precinct one, precinct three, precinct four. There's no one that, on this council, that would take a call, or rather, that wouldn't take a call from someone because they weren't in your precinct. We're all in this together. We're, we're, there's, every neighborhood wants and needs the other neighborhoods to be successful in this town, because we're such a small community. We all have one very common goal, which is to make Winthrop as good a community as it can be. We all chose to raise our families here, we've all chose to live here and spend chunks of our lives here. So, so I don't think anyone's coming at this with any malfeasance or any ulterior motives. I, I think it's really, how do we make it so that we can have the best government possible? What we, what we found was that, I think it was eighty percent of the elections since two thousand and six, the councilors ran unopposed. Is that getting us the best and the brightest candidates to, to come out? Is there anything that we can do to get more candidates to, to come out? Because a contested election is gonna be where the, the exchange of ideas can come from. It's gonna be where we, we see the pros and cons of issues and where councilors stand on the issues. If, if we simply look at the present, I, I think we're doing us all a disservice. I think we need to look at this as the future, that, that we're not building Winthrop for, for twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four. This is a forty-year plan. What happens at that middle school will be with us for the next forty years. If, if any of the schools change, that's a forty-year plan. If, if major things happen, it's all gonna be for the next two generations. And that's something that we really, I think, harped on as we were going through this process. Now, I think what's really important is something that Vice President Ruggiero pointed out, which is the, the regulations, the ordinances, that can be done through this council. But, but all the charter changes that were proposed, those have to go to the ballot. And your vote isn't necessarily about whether or not you're for or against this issue. These are big, big issues, especially the at-large. Whether or not you think personally that, that we should be a town with that large government, or a town with precinct base, or some, some area in between, a hybrid, isn't exactly what you're voting on. What you're voting on is whether it should go to the people, whether it should go to the voters of this town as to whether or not we should, we should take this up and, and, and make this change. I, I don't think it's fair to say that we simply elect town councilors and, and that election is why we're putting our faith in, in the town council and that we should blindly leave it there, and, and that should be it. That, that's why we had the vote, and that's why you ran, and that we have no business asking it to go to the, the town voters. But I don't think that's exactly correct. I think that the, the, the voters... I think that the voters are there for the big things. Changing the way the government works is a big thing. That's why it needs to go to the voters. If it simply gets struck down by this committee and never has a chance to go to that next level, are we not depriving the town possibly of a better form of government, more representative, more within line of what the voters want? And I think that's an important feature here, that if these aren't the will of the people, if these aren't the ideas that people want, that the voters don't want at-large government, the voters will come out and they'll tell us that they don't want at-large government. If if the voters want at-large government, we'll know that too. But for us to simply hear from a vocal minority potentially saying that this is a bad idea because and never let it get to that next vote, I think it's something that I hope each of you councillors will really consider, that it's a it's a bigger vote than simply the issue that's in front of you. It's an issue of whether or not democracy requires us to vote on this as a community and to come together as a community. Our charter, which, you know, I think we've heard that it was written well in 2006 and our founding fathers knew what they were doing. And I know we spoke to Mr. Riley repeatedly, our George Washington of the charter, as I mentioned. And the reality is, is the charter provides for this. It provides for this very mechanism for us twice a decade to go through this and when there are changes, that we have a path to do so. That the path goes through the Attorney General's office. It goes through a home rule petition at the State House. Then it comes to the voters. And that path is there for a reason. It's in our charter for a reason. Just like the Constitution of the United States grows and changes over time, so doesn't the town government. And it's a, you know, government being local at the source and real government being local is 100% correct here. I mean, that's what we have. We have a government that affects the people that live in this community with every decision that's made. And I would ask that the people make this very, very big decision. I think we spent all this time and I think we figured it was, I don't know, somewhere around 40 or 50 hours, a person on the on the committee. And these weren't things we took lightly. These weren't items that we just tried to push through. I think we all read about them. We discussed them with people in the community. We discussed them with people from the Collins Center. We discussed them with people we knew from other towns and positions in other towns to see how they were dealing with some of these issues. And we looked at case studies and, you know, I think there was one comment I heard in the past that it wasn't a diverse committee. It couldn't have been more of a diverse committee. We had old, we had young, we had men, we had women, we had left, we had right, we had people in the middle. We had people that were all four items and people on the polar opposite. And it got testy at times, but by and large, it was a real discussion. It was a discussion about the policies and the politics of how to make Winthrop as great as a community as it can be. So, you know, we took these one by one as a problem and a solution. And I think what we did here and what we've proposed, and I have the recommendations in front of me, we proposed them in a manner and wording that I think really captured what it was that we did over that period from March to whenever we were last before you handing this in. And I really hope that you consider, again, not the issue, but whether or not the voters should be making this decision.
Thank you. No, I'm sorry. But I do thank you, Chairman. I thank your committee for doing that, for doing all the work that you've done and for giving us your explanation of it. I'm not saying we won't be asking you again, just for more, you know, maybe clarification or whatever. But I thank you for your time.
I'll try not to talk so much next time.
No, that's okay. I will say, you know, it seems like, from what the Vice President said, that, you know, the vast majority of these items seem to have positive recommendation. And I don't know, you know, I'm not saying we're not going to address the ones that have positive recommendation, but we're going to focus over the next month or two, whatever it is, on the ones that there's, you know, some questions. Some of them seems to be a lot of, you know, a few nine to nothing that you guys, that the subcommittee kind of agrees with also. Then we'll probably focus. Now, just to let everyone know, this is not a yes or no conclusion on any of these. The council can amend them, they can adjust them, they could refuse them, they can accept them, they could come up with another one. You know, we asked the ORC to give us guidance and to do a lot of the legwork like we would on a subcommittee and then come back with recommendations. Just as in a subcommittee, we can make amendments to those recommendations. And one of the ones that, you know, and we could open it up a little bit here on the council for some discussion, but, you know, it seems to be in that question one where there seems to be a lot of ambiguity, not ambiguity, but discussion that's needed. And I think it, like the Vice President did, has separated it out, I think, correct, is what you did, Steve?
That's effectively what the committee decided.
Yeah.
Was to take one out of the three.
Right.
Because it was broken up into three sections.
So, and again, for like, I think one of them is 1A, should the size of the size composition be changed from reduced to six precinct councillors and go into all-at-large? There hasn't been, which I would like to see at some point, discussion. Obviously, there's going to be discussion on precinct or all-at-large. But I haven't heard any thoughts on or recommendations from the subcommittee on, forgetting about the composition, the precinct or at-large. But was there any thought on the subcommittee level as to the number itself? You know, was there any thought on, geez, we don't agree on the, let's say, precinct or at-large, but we agree that we think there's too many or not enough or whatever. Was there any discussion on? No, you know, there seems definitely to be some, you know, a lot of discussion on precinct versus at-large. But was there any discussion on, you know what, we like the precinct councillors, but we also do like six councillors and a council president. Like, was there any discussion on the number of councillors?
Yeah, so that's recommendation 1A.
Right, well, that's part of, it's like two things in 1A, right? It just says, it says the number and it says to go to all-at-large. But was there any discussion that, you know what, we like precinct, but we do like six?
During the ORC, there was a discussion surrounding that. It wasn't very, it didn't last that long. I believe the representative from the Collins Center had sort of give us a really good reason as to why you couldn't have like four wards and maybe it's because we're technically a city and not a town. But Mike, I would ask you to refresh my memory.
So precincts is a term of art in government. It's 4,000 people, give or take. Our precincts, our six precincts are broken down into about 3,000 people per precinct. We can combine precincts into wards, but we can't change the lines of precincts because that is done by the state and beyond. So we're not able to change precincts, but we could combine precincts into wards.
Right, no, I understand that and that's another option. You could, you know, some people say all-at-large, some people say all precincts. Well, you could do a combination and say, okay, we're going to have, just for easy numbers, one and two are going to be Ward 1, three and four are going to be Ward 2 and four and five, you know, whatever. Have three wards and you could have three at-large and three wards. So now there's still, but I'm not really talking about that now because I think that's a longer discussion. I'm just talking about the number of councillors. Is everybody, is the subcommittee convinced that nine is the number? Or did they even discuss that? Because I think that, you know, I think the thought from what I'm hearing here is that one of the driving concerns with a lot of these earlier recommendations come around, you know, trying to get more involvement. So, and I think it was said by the chairman. So the easiest way to get more involvement, right, is to pay more money. Then everybody wants to come. Second way is to reduce the number. This way, there's less spots, so there's just more development by that. And the other thought on their part was at-large because we have a bigger pool of candidates. But, and I'm not sure what it is, but are we convinced of a, is that even worthy of discussion on its own?
So, I don't want to speak for any individual on the committee, but the fact that recommendation 1A was not taken, I would take that as a, yes, nine is the number. We didn't specifically say we want 12, 9, 7, 6. But the, you know, we wanted to, we didn't want to mess with what was presented to us too much out of respect to the work that has gone into this. So I think that would have been pretty disingenuous of the council if we then go and rewrite all of this work that had happened in the past 30 Wednesdays. So that wasn't our intention in the subcommittee. Our intention was to evaluate what was presented to us. So recommendation 1A in and of itself was was not passed with a positive recommendation. So I think that, you know, the subcommittee prefers 9 to 7.
Okay, yeah, so that's, I didn't know if that could be broken up to say, okay, I think, you know, seven is the number, but we like the composition as precincts or whatever.
Yeah, and I think, you know, it may have come up in the past two months of discussion, but, you know, I'll just leave.
It is funny because over the last 15 years, the one thought was always, was not really discussed amongst the councillors. It was always, we want a mayor instead of a town manager. No disrespect, Mr. Town Manager. But that was always what was talked about, like, oh, we need a mayor, we need a mayor, we need a mayor. And now it's going in a different direction. And I understand, looking at the 80-plus percent of races that are uncontested and then you look at the school committee, which is all-at-large, and they're always contested. Not a ton, but there's always more than three. So I didn't know if it was the number because the school committee has seven and which seems to, you know, three every whatever four-year terms. Every two years, there's three up and there always seems to be five or six or four or five, you know, running. So I didn't know if it was the thought on the number.
We didn't get that granular. I think just from hearing feedback on this for about two years now, you know, a lot of folks are even talking about going back to town meeting. And so, I mean, like, that's the other direction, I think. So, you know, that didn't really come up too much in our ORC, but in the prior one, I remember there were some comments about that as well.
Mr. President, if I could just address one thing the Vice President said?
Okay, quickly.
Sure. One of the things he said was he didn't want to disturb what was brought from our OSC to you. Just the opposite. We want it disturbed. We hope that the town council would take these recommendations and tweak them. For example, the recall language. We proposed some generic language. There's been some discussion, I understand. And one of that discussion is that the number of signatures of 500 was just not enough, that there needs to be more of a safeguard. And there was a discussion of 50% of the voters from the prior election, which would bring it to, you know, potentially 1,000 voters signing it or 1,200 voters signing it. And that would be fine. It's really a safeguard that we hope never would get used, but it's there if it was ever needed. So I just wanted to point that out that we.
Thank you, Vice President.
No, no, and I just think, you know, in our subcommittee, with the three of us sitting there, you know, we weren't trying to recreate the work, but again, deserves the attention.
And again, there's going to be multiple meetings, but in, I'll get to Council Honan first. I'm not going to say what you can and can't discuss, discuss anything, I guess. It's just wide open right now, so whatever you'd like to discuss.
Sure, sure. I just want to make a statement about something I think is somewhat of a misrepresentation. Mr. Chap, it's Chapdellane, not Chapdellanee, right?
Chapdellane.
Chapdellane. So I've read the, I've read the charter in section 9-6, periodic review of charter and ordinances. The recommendations of the special committee shall appear on the council agenda for action. Now, just like the recommendations that are received from any appointed committee, those recommendations are sent to and acted upon by the council. They're not sent to be rubber stamped. They're sent for review and to vote per the charter. There's nothing in the charter that states they need to go to the voter. They go to the, they go to the council first. So the accusation, it's not your accusation, it's what I've heard in emails and on Facebook, that somehow the council is behaving tyrannically or trying to undermine citizens, I believe is nonsense and a misrepresentation. The council receives recommendations from appointed committees all the time. And those recommendations are just that, they're recommendations to be considered. Recommendations are not decrees or rulings. I just want to make that point. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that it right now?
Yep.
Sure. Counselor, if you still want?
Yeah, while I do respect your opinion, I think that's, and I understand that's in the charter. My view is because this is being voted on, or that these, if it was passed by the council, would be voted on by citizens, I really don't think there's a harm in voting, having citizens vote on these changes because it only helps with the better understanding. If the vote turns out to be that they don't want it, great, great. We understand that they don't want it. But the work was done by this committee to put forth recommendations that if passed by the council would be voted on by our citizens. So I think it's, I think it's responsible to have them be voted on and decided by the people of this town.
Counselor Matson?
Yes, I think a big thank you goes out to you guys for putting a lot of effort into it. It's a lot, 30 Wednesdays is enormous. 20? Okay, thank you. Because 30, it seemed like more than half a year. And either way, it was a lot. And I felt like we did a lot too, not nearly as much. But we did review every line and every word in the entire proposed changes. And quite frankly, the way I look at it is everything was approved pretty much unanimously, except the contentious ones which actually changed the way our government is structured. So it is worthy of review and long-term consideration. And I think that as the charter was written, it's important to have these phases, these stages, that goes from ORC, then it goes to the town. Well, when actually, thanks to President Mittery, it went to the rules and ordinance, which went to the subcommittee. Then it's actually supposed to go to the town council, then goes to the state, and then goes to the voters. Those stages are meant to be there so that this can be refined as you asked for us to do. And I think that's important. It's like filtering a document to make it the best it can be before it gets to the voters where they can then vote upon it. So I do think that's the process and we're just doing our jobs by actually giving our opinion on this, on these changes. So I will say that, again, by and large, we approved everything because what you did as a group was make our government more efficient. You've improved the charter. And I think that it's important to get most of these approved and enacted sooner than later because it actually will make us a better government. So I'm thankful for all the effort. I'm thankful for your second KMP law opinion, just to kind of document the process, make sure that we cover our butts. I also wanted to just say that if I'm not mistaken, in the 20, in the 16 years of this former government, this charter review has never made it this far. Is that correct? If I'm not mistaken, it's never actually, changes have never been acted?
No.
2011.
They were voted on in the ballot in 2011.
Oh, they did get voted upon? Okay.
So. Not substantial changes.
Not substantial.
I would consider some of these to be substantial, less substantive. Where the others were, the ones that were voted on, I think in 2011 were, you know, more minor changes.
Yeah, much like.
There have been a few that have gone to a ballot.
So it's a big deal. And I will say, though, I'm excited to explore more in terms of the recall and some of the other language in 1A. I thought it was too much jammed into one for 1A to be consumed. It needs to be broken up into, the TCP term is a separate entity. The composition should be broken up into a separate line item. And then as far as the recall and as far as accountability, I couldn't support that more. But it does, and I was much in line with the same logic that was presented earlier. I get nervous that a poorly-written recall provision becomes grounds for someone to have frivolous recalls and as someone said, it can become smear campaigns. Not that you need a recall to do it. But with the furthering conversation, it looked like if you took the numbers from other towns that do have that provision. There's a skunk by our door, by the way.
Oh, my gosh.
She's been around. I do think that if you got more reasonable and allowed for some accountability in a process where you get not one person to pull the papers, but equal to the number of registered voters and signatures to actually pull papers to run for an office, would be the same number you'd need to pull those papers. And then you'd need that 50% of the previous election. I think that's very fair, so that would be at least 1,500 signatures by registered voters to even get it on the ballot. And then, of course, you need a majority. That, to me. to even get it on the ballot. And then, of course, you need a majority. That, to me, is more reasonable. Now, what you're doing is if there is a four-year term still left at the end of this whole ORC, uh, change, then you have some form of accountability where if someone's running roughshod, you can, you can stop them in their tracks by having this recall. But for the most part, if it's two-year terms for the TCP and two-year terms for the town councils, there's really no point in a recall, cause as someone said earlier, the election serves as that accountability. So I think that there's definitely needs more, uh, conversation and more, um, clarity, but I would be open to a reasonable recall measure. And I would also, I really liked what you said about the reason why you suggested, and I say you, as in the whole RSC, not you, Mark Chapdelane, but I'm saying, the reason why you made these suggestions was there are problems, were, there were problems prior, and you're trying to solve them. And so I think for the incentivizing the, the town councils to get more involved with the two-year term, completely agree with that. Cause as a, as a father of two, a business owner and so forth, I like a smaller commitment, because I don't know where I'm gonna be, not to mention with parents and getting ill and so forth. You just don't know. And that means that more people might get involved at two years. So, um, I didn't really understand what the problem was, though, with the counselor composition now. I don't feel as though there is a problem, so I don't know why you're trying to solve a problem that doesn't exist. The four-year terms for a town counselor president does make more sense to me, because you can get more stuff done. And I'm still upset that the old middle school is still not done. And maybe that would have been done, had that person had four years. I just don't know. So I guess, uh, well, ultimately, we're gonna end up voting our opinions based on everyone's presentation and the community's feedback. And, uh, we'll do our best to filter out what it, what it is that the voters actually get to vote on. It's our job to make sure they're voting on something safe, not dangerous for this town. And then once they get there, they will go ahead and let the, their opinion be heard. And I look forward to improving this town even more, cause I do love it, and I'm thankful for being a part of the process.
I think there will be ample time, too, for debate, too, where it's a November twenty twenty-three election. You know, this vote, and if the vote is to send it to the people, there'll be a lot of time for debate and a lot of time to, to really discuss this. So when it gets to the ballot box, people should be very informed as they vote.
Council Belcher? Thank you. Um, I just had a couple clarifying questions for recommendation one, this A, B, and C. Is that meant to be taken all at once? Or, I don't know if that's a question for you or for you?
I think, I, again, they're making a recommendation, the, the thought processes, the councils. I mean, you could break it up any which way you want.
But it's not like a parlay.
It's not a, I mean, I think they might have thought of it potentially as all or none, but I mean, it's, it's what the council decides it to be.
Thank you. And then another question. Do we know how many percentages, or what percentage of the at-large races were unopposed in that eighty?
Most of the, yeah, most of the races, and, and this is why it goes back to me, the numbers, too. Most of the races from two thousand five, uh, two thousand six on were unopposed, over eighty percent. The school committee, much less unopposed, proba- I, I think it was under thirty percent of races. Um, however, the precinct versus the at-large, there's not that much difference. They're both over eighty percent. Um, so.
Thank you. And then just one other point about each neighborhood or each precinct being very similar for precinct three. I think that's particularly different, um, with Deer Island and the airport and all that stuff. And just thinking, again, about numbers, if the town were to vote, even if every registered voter in precinct three came out and voted against all at large, there's still a chance that it could be overruled by other precincts that may not feel the same way that they don't have the representation. So that's just something I want to throw out there. And thank you for all the work.
I think the comment I was making was more, you know, the airport is, affects all of us.
No, I know.
Doesn't matter where on this island you live. Um, we, we all have the same unified issue that there's a very active international airport twenty-three miles from our coast.
Council DeMarco?
Well, first off, um, I have watch envy, because your watch has been looking at me the, the entire time. Um, so you know what? I, 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 first off, I respect the job that you guys did, all of you. I think you, I think you are extremely thorough. Um, you know, I also respect a lot, uh, most of the comments made by my constituents on the council, because I think they all make good points. Um, for example, Council Honan said, it's a process. You know what I mean? It's, it's like, you know, it goes here, goes there, it goes there. It's not guaranteed to go to the voters. Now, um, I've also heard from counselors that, um, you know, I've been looking at it from your point of view and saying, you know what? I think this should go to the voters, you know? And I've been told, you know what? You're elected for a reason. You know, you make a decision, and that's what you're elected for. And sometimes you have to make tough decisions. Like, a couple weeks ago, I made a motion to tear down a tree that apparently nobody in town wanted to tear down. Um, so that's a tough decision. Um, at the same time, at the same time, um, I do believe when it comes to your government, it should be the people who decide your government, not us. I, I, I don't feel like I should decide what the town government makeup should be, because I'm, I'm out of the government. So, um, you know, I, I'm, I'm in favor of getting this to the voters. That's my opinion. Um, as far as the recall goes, um, and, uh, Vice President, a little, a little leeway, if you don't mind, um.
Sure.
I, uh, thank you.
I'm not stopping you.
I, um.
You might, uh, Council President might.
No, 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 no. I'm saying, in subcommittee, um, when it came up for a vote, I raised the bar a little bit to, to see if it would pass. It's still, it didn't come out with a favorable recommendation. But, um, you know, talking with other counselors, um, you know, I truly believe in holding us accountable. And I, I am, I have always been in favor of recall, but the bar has to be raised to a level that it can't be disingenuous. It's gotta, it's gotta be there. And, and I think the most recent proposal I heard, the fifty percent of the last electorate, that's a tough ask. That's a very tough ask. Um, and just so you know, I read, I, I read your email and, um, Lee, I read your email as well. So, so, um, you know, I'm, i- i- if it was, if the bar was raised that high, I'd, I'd be all in favor of it. Like, I would. Um.
Look forward to your motion.
What?
I look forward to your motion.
So, um, but anyways, thank you to the committee for the job you've done and, uh, and the watch. So, thank you.
Council Flakat?
Not a gift. I want to thank you and your committee for all the very hard work you did. Um, it really shows that you've really put a lot of thought into it. And there are a lot of things that I, most of the things I agree with you on, but there's a few that are not so glorious. So I would like to hear lots of discussion on this. Uh, and then I would like to see the important ones go to the voter. But I think before we get there, I think we should have a lot of input as to, you know, because we're doing this, uh, we should be the ones that are saying, you know, we feel this works or we feel this doesn't work. But, um, other than that, I, I'm looking forward to going to the voters.
Thank you. Councilor, Vice President Roger.
Uh, I don't think I have anything additional to add at this point. Um, you know, I will just say that I've, uh, discussed this for the better part of, uh, two years now. Um, and I, I really look forward to hearing, um, now that we have something tangible that's in front of the people, I really look forward to hearing feedback from, um, the public on this. I think we struggled to get public participation in both ORCs that I participated on. Um, believe it or not, people don't like showing up to meetings at seven o'clock on Wednesday nights. I, I know. Um, but, um, more Tuesday. We, we meant our Wednesdays, remember? But I think, um, you know, that's, I think, the part that I look forward to most here, so. Thank you.
And, and again, it's amazing that, you know, some things like the abandonment, I think it's a great thing. And I think it's amazing that it took fifteen years to catch on to that and say, wow, that's not right. You shouldn't be able to go to a meeting just every other time and be okay. And that's like, that was a great catch, and it's something that we should have caught earlier. The budget is another great catch, that it's just like, you know, this is just common sense stuff. It just doesn't work. Um, and almost, uh, y- you know, when you look at the, the, the ones that are being talked about the most, and you look at the two-year terms, and you say, there's so many great things about that for a counselor that, you know, they could, they could really, if they have a passion, they could get involved and not have to commit, you know, four years, which is a, a, an awful long time. Um, and then you look at the negative and you say, that means potentially the whole council's up every two, well, not potentially, the whole council's up every two years. Um, and again, we go back to, I think, what the original goal of their thinking is, is to get more participation. So now, if you have in, right now, we have on the council side, um, five elections every two years. And we're having trouble finding people. If we go to two years, now we're having nine elections every two years. So we're gonna have even, you know, my first thought is, it's even harder to find people. Now, instead of trying to find ten to fill five spots, now you're trying to find eighteen to fill nine spots. So, you know, the two years has a plus and minus on that end, right? Um, the four years for the council president, if it passes, I hope it's like four years from now. Cause I, I think it's a, I think, I, I think it's a good thing. Personally, I don't think it's a good thing, but I do think there's a lot of validity. Um, you know, you go back and keep everything the way it is and change to two years again, now you're, you know, one of the major discussions here is recall, and as somebody said earlier, that kind of takes it out, cause you can't recall six months after the election. You can't recall six months before the next election, so you only have a one-year period. So the recall is a two-year term, I guess. That's kind of the recall provision. The only, the, if, if everything, if you kept the council president at two years, you kept off, moved the councilors to two years, the only one that potentially would be recalled would be a school committee member. They're the only ones left with four-year terms. Um, there's, there's so much plus and minus I, I look at on all the, you know, contentious issues, I guess. Um, you know, a- and I look at, see, I think, to me, it's the not, again, you look at the easiest way to get more participation, again, money is one. Again, making it less, less positions is two, right? So if you're having trouble filling nine positions, well, you'd have better luck filling seven. Or even better filling five, or even better filling, you know, that's, the thought, I guess, would be, that would be the most logical thing, would be, um, to lower the number. But then again, now, now you lower the number to seven, uh, six plus the council president, now you're left with that option, no at-large and just one six precinct, all at-large and no precincts, or three at-large and three wards. I guess those are, you know, if, if you thought that a number is a thing, cause we've been told over the years that it's way too many. The selectmen were three, that was fine, maybe five, the school committee's seven. So there's, there's so many pluses and minuses, I think, on every one of these things. And, and, you know, to me, I look at it as I'm elected to do the will of the people. And if I have, you know, fifty people and they all say, at-large is, um, at-large is ridiculous, we need precinct, then you know what? That's the way I should vote, cause I'm representing the people. If I have five people that say, at-large is ridiculous, and five people say, you know what? I think it's a good idea, then I might think it's a good idea or not, but I think the voters should decide on that. Um, so I have to, you have to listen to constituents. As Council Flakat said, I think it's very important that we're gonna have a public hearing. I think tonight was very important, just not that we did substantial stuff, but a lot of people don't even know what these, we all know, we're, we're pretty informed and we keep informed. A lot of people, you know, it's just busy lives and they don't have the time to keep informed. So first, I think it's important that we get it out there and, and have discussion amongst the citizens, and then have them come back to us and say, you know, we really think this is worthy of being considered. We don't. To me, if you could have a really good debate back and forth, if I agree with something and Council Flakat doesn't, and we both make good points, that should go to the people, to me. If, if, if we all pretty much say, you know what? You're right, that's ridiculous, then I think that's our job. But, um, but I thank, uh, the committee members that are here, I thank the chairperson, I thank Vice President Roger, um, I thank the counselors, um, and this is a good discussion. We, this will be, I, I can't promise this is gonna be on the next agenda, because we're going to have a relatively quick meeting, because we have the fall forum. Um, but there will be at least one public hearing, and we'll see how, uh, vigorous that debate is and how many people show up. And then there will be more discussion, then ultimately we'll vote. The goal is, obviously, anything that's going to go on. We would like to have it on November ballot, next November. Um, I'm not sure exactly how long the process is with the state. I don't think it's that long. It's just getting them to do it. I do think, from my understanding, if it goes to the state and it's a realistic thing, they agree or not, it's gonna come back to us for the citizens. Um, but there will be much more discussion. I thank everybody for their input. There'll be another round of public comment a little later, um, to, again, get the bar rolling, but, um, you know, some things I, I, I just think we have to be efficient and expedient and get them done, and that's the form of government. We have to get things done quicker. This is worthy of time, and I, and, you know, I don't say we have to vote on this in November first, or November fifteenth, or December first. I, I just think we want to get it right, and whatever we decide. So, thank you, thank everyone else, and we can move on now, which would make everyone happy. We'll go to new business. Town council, the following two items are more of a housekeeping. They do not have to be sent to rules. They're more of a housekeeping issue, something that we've been doing. I'll ask the town manager for a little clarification on it. Um, the first is that the town council accept the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter six fifty-three, Section forty of the Acts of nineteen eighty-nine to commence with fiscal year twenty-three assessors. The second is that the town council accept the provision of MGL, Chapter fifty-nine, Section five, Paragraph fifty-four, and exempt one thousand dollars of fair cash value on personal property taxes to be taxed beginning fiscal year twenty-three assessors. None of the, these are housekeeping items. None of these are gonna raise your taxes in any way, shape, or form. If the council, if the town manager could just give us an overview, if there's anything else to be discussed on this.
This is the way they've been doing business all along. This is just basically, um, re, you know, just recodifying, required to do it every two years, so either the council just needs to re-adopt it. That's part of the Mass General Law. It's, it's a practice that's already going on now.
Yeah.
Uh, it's just recodifying. It's gonna be voted on, so.
Okay. So I do have two motions in front of us. Um, we could take them separately, or we could take them together. Do I have a motion to accept doing what we've been doing, uh, on these two, um, suggestions to us?
Motion.
Motion by.
To take them together.
Cut, ma- motion to take, to accept provision, Mass General Law, Chapter six fifty-three, um, Section forty of the Acts of nineteen eighty-nine to commence with fiscal twenty-three, and a subsequent motion to accept the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter fifty-nine, Section five, Paragraph fifty-four, to exempt one thousand dollars of fair cash value on personal property taxes to be taxed beginning fiscal twenty-three. There's a motion on the floor by Councilor DeMarco, uh, for positive recommendation on both. There's a second by Councilor Fisillo. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing done, I'll ask for a roll call. I don't think.
Oh, I'm sorry. Council Honan?
I just, I would like to know what they're for. I, I understand that they're, we're just recodifying, and they're just something that.
It's small, probably, it's just personal property abatements, small, so you get personal property accounts, um, and people get taxed. They can give abatements, uh, to a thousand dollars on this. The assessors have done it all along. People come in and ask for abatements. It's just recodifies that we're accepting this section of the Mass General laws and allows us to, the assessors to do that. That's all.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? I'll take a roll call vote. I don't think we need it, but just for, to make sure.
Council Honan?
Yes.
Council Fisillo?
Yes.
Council Munson?
Yes.
Council Belcher?
Yes.
Council DeMarco?
Yes.
Council Flakat?
Yes.
Council Iolo? Vice President Roger?
Yes.
President Luteri?
Yes. Thank you. I have one motion right now for appointment, um, that the town council accept the appointment made by Town Council President Luteri to appoint Kim Dimes to the Conservation Commission for a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Um, I'm very happy to, to nominate Kim. She's, um, has the qualifications to do this job. She's also another generation of dimes that will be serving the community, and I thank them for that. Uh, there's a, do I have a second? Second. Um, any discussion on the motion, on the appointment? Seeing done, all those in favor say aye. I oppose, no, the ayes have. Congratulations, Kim. Granddaughter.
Parents have, has her raised hand.
I'm sorry?
I'm just saying Karen had her hand raised.
We're gonna get to public comment in one minute. We have.
Council President, sir, if I could just, maybe on the next discussion item, take the TIPS project last. Director Cal has been hanging around, I think.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We could just maybe take that one first. TIPS project updates.
Okay. Um, so we just, I, I had a few things on the agenda that I just wanted to have discussion on to keep it in the light. We had a presentation last week. It drew, it drew a lot of, uh, attention from citizens and counselors. counselors, so if we could have an update on the TIPS project, and I'll ask Director Cal.
Sure, yep, so we, we actually had a Zoom meeting on Monday.
Monday, yeah.
Yesterday, with our engineered design team, myself, Tony, and Chief De La Hanty, we went through a, a, a lot of the comments that we made, we asked the question, you know, about the bike lanes, and they've committed to us that they're gonna go back to the state and see what, if anything, can be done to opt out of the bike, bike lanes. We did let them know that, you know, parking and congestion, loss of parking and congestion, relief of congestion is more important to a majority of, of, of the community, it seemed. You know, they're gonna, they're gonna, just at least give us our options, whether or not bike lanes are absolutely integral to the, to the funding of the, of the, of the project. And they're working on that, they're also gonna take all of the comments and concerns and questions that were submitted, compile them on one document, our engineering team, and provide answers to them, which will be given back to the town manager for his release.
Yeah.
And that's essentially where we're at. But the question, I, I think what, Tony and myself, you know, wanted answered, ultimately answered, was whether or not the bike lanes are an absolute mandatory requirement of the TIP process. It was always presented to me from all the way back to 2013, that the town had to justify, or had to pursue all, all modes of transportation safety and, and all of Mass DOT's requirements, and that you would, if the bike lanes fit, they had to be utilized, that's how it was presented to me, that you didn't have an option. If the bike lanes and, didn't fit in, in this, you know, in the area of the project, you had to come up with, with, with a alternative measures. Winthrop Street, when Winthrop Street was initially part of the project, bike lanes didn't fit on Winthrop Street, and our design team had to use a parallel road, Bodice Street was gonna be the, the parallel road to, to move the bike lanes, or some sort of bike network down to the, to the Bodice Street. That was still under review at the time that that portion of the project got, got removed by former administration. So, again, I was always presented with, with the idea, and that, that bike lanes were mandatory requirement. We, we, having them ask that question directly to the state, to see if there's, you know, if there's an option to opt out of bike lanes, not, maybe the community still wants bike lanes, it's just, you know, trying to get that answer for, for the, for the council.
Just to get the options.
Yeah, whether or not that option exists or not. So that's what they're working on right now.
Okay. Vice President Ruggiero?
Thank you, just a question that came to me from a constituent, related to this project, that didn't come up last time, but there's a blinking, either red or yellow light on the intersection of Revere Street and Shirley Street near the gas station. Has there been any consideration, and maybe it's part of this project, maybe it's not, but I'm not sure anyone follows that, it's kind of like, people are numb to it, we all drive by it all the time, maybe you don't even notice it, but, so any consideration there to putting a crosswalk with, you know, like, kind of like you have up in Heights, you push the button, the lights flash, folks can cross, is that part of the TIPS project? I just forget the presentation.
There are a lot of crosswalks.
But yeah, and is that an area that we're looking at, because I'm not sure if that light's really solving the problem, and when we start talking about the MBTA potentially moving bus stops with that Governor's Park stop, which one of our more busy stops, I would say, just anecdotally, you know, maybe we want to just think about where the crosswalks are gonna go, and how folks are gonna come from that neighborhood over to the stop, you, you know what I'm trying to say?
Right, right now, there's a, no crosswalk that exists across-
Right, yeah.
Shirley Street, you know, from 99 to, to-
The bus stop, yeah.
Well, the most, it's-
Oh, yeah.
The gas station.
Across that.
And across the other way. What this project did do, they reshaped that corner.
Okay.
They added crosswalks, reshaped it to, to shorten the distance of the crossing.
Okay.
I will look into the actual light, whether or not there was any modifications to that blinking light, I don't recall seeing that.
I don't either, and maybe there was an oversight, because it's, it's something that's just like there, it's been there forever, and I'm not sure if we're-
But it was, it was more of a, I mean, a blinking yellow light is to, you know-
Pay attention.
Slow you down and perceive a caution, right?
Right.
Nobody does that with yellow light.
No, you usually speed up.
Right. But, but there's no crosswalks there-
Sure, exactly.
So, there'll be pedestrian crossing signs-
Okay.
With these, you know, with the installation of any crosswalk.
Got it, all right, thank you.
Councilor Flockhart.
I have a couple of issues. One is, Winthrop should be a town where we bicycle, it's the proper size for bicycling, and it's that kind of community. However, people are afraid to bicycle on our streets. The purpose of putting in the bike lanes is to try and take a little of that fear out, so that if you have a designated bike lane, you might feel a little safer using a bicycle. So everybody's saying, "Well, nobody's bicycling, why are we putting in bicycle lanes?" Well, the reason is to get a little of that fear out of it, and maybe then more people with bicycle. My other issue is, they have moved the bus stop from, if you're coming in from East Boston on Main Street, the bus stop is currently before the intersection at McGee's Corner. They've moved that bus stop to the other side of the intersection, so in front of the repair stop there at Duval's, I think. They've also put in bike lanes there, so now the bus stop will be in the bike lane, that's where they'll be stopping. But there's almost no room to get around that bus, particularly when going in the other direction toward Winthrop Street, there's a lane of traffic backed up till that light changes. The lane, the traffic lane on the right can keep going, you know, but then it stops, and then the lane on the left can go to Winthrop Street. Do you understand what I'm saying, Jim?
I should have spoke, I should have spoke to that as well, and they're also reviewing all the bus stop locations.
Okay.
Yes.
And most of them might look okay.
I got a chain of emails with our engineer going back and forth with, with the MBTA and, and the state, so those comments were made, they are being reviewed.
Yeah, because it looks like if you're, if that bus is there, the traffic gets stopped on all the lanes. That's my two hot issue.
Councilor De Marco?
Yeah, just two really quick questions, Steve. I assume that bike sharrows don't solve the problem in terms of funding versus bike lanes?
No, I mean, they're a, they're a step in the right direction, but the state doesn't recognize them as, you know, as a best measure.
Yeah. No, I just mentioned that, because we just put them in, what, two years ago, that we put the bike sharrows in?
Yeah, but they don't affect the fear.
No, I, I'm happy about it, because, you know, my daughters come out of the house, I live on a busy street, and they take their bikes and they go down to Deer, Deer Island, and I'm just glad that there's something in the road that says, "Hey, there's bikers here." You know what I mean? The other question I have is, I know there are plans to put a, or at least preliminarily, to put a crosswalk on Revere Street in the Bayou area. The question I had for you is, is Bayou considered a private street, or is it a public street?
Private way.
Private way.
That's, again, that's not the leg of the TIPS project, that's, that's outside the scope of the TIPS.
Yeah.
But that crosswalk is, will be reviewed and discussed with the restoration process of the national grid process.
Okay, all right.
And we're, but yeah, Bayou is a private way, so that, you know, and, you know, a crossing is fine, but, you know, I, I think we have to educate the community that, you know, we, we can, it's not an invitation to walk through someone's, through someone's yard, a lot of people want to walk, you know, walk down that area, which is fine, I mean, you can walk through a private way, but the town's never gonna make it, it's not public property, you're never gonna have ADA compliant sidewalks, so now, you know, to consider it a safe route to school, I don't know how you ever do, because you're walking on a dirt road.
Yeah, no, I, I walked my daughter to school there every day, when she went there, but we do plow that road, correct?
We, we make a pass on every private way, but that's just for emergency vehicles and, and delivery of mail, you know, it's a courtesy, we're not, you know, you got, you end up with snow piles, it's, it's just a push, I mean, most of them are dead ends, you can't, you know, they're never gonna be cleared, you know, in, in a way that's, I would, I would recommend as a safe route to school.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
Councilor Belcher?
My only comment was about the buses, but it sounds like that's being dealt with.
Well, it's being looked at, yeah, and, so, they, they did, MBTA did speak somewhat about the route changes, although those won't be implemented probably for four years-
Right.
I guess, but they are aware of it, and they are, you know, looking at, looking at all the stops.
Right.
Couple of the stops on this project, maybe even four of them, are being eliminated.
There's a significant number of changes just along this whole corridor.
Back corridor, yeah. Governor's Park on both directions is being eliminated, and the main street at, you know, where, where, as Flockhart was talking, the main street and Winthrop Street stop are being eliminated potentially.
And they're potentially added on Shirley and Revere as well, at that intersection.
Yes.
So, that, I think, could get real dicey.
Councilor Munson, do you have any questions?
I, I love biking, and I, but at the same time, even with the proposed changes, I wouldn't bike on that road, so, I mean, I, I'm a fan of where you're going with trying to get the options, I really am.
I want to be clear, I'm not, I'm not making a, you know, I'm in favor of it or not in favor of it, what I'm trying to get for, for you all is, at Tony's request, a true answer of what our potential options are. We've designed a project with bike lanes in it, because the state, in the onset of this project, pushed all modes, you know, the best measures for all modes of transportation, and, and we, we took the design process in that direction to, to meet their criteria, and, you know, to, to forward our design and, and forward the process. It took us 10 years to get to the point where we're finally programmed for construction.
Yeah.
You know, and I just want to be able to say to you all with a straight face, look, the bike lanes are required, or the project isn't gonna get funded, you know, or, or yes, we do have the option of choosing parking over bike lanes, and then that's your decision, the town manager's decision.
I do have two quick questions that are, how, what's the lowest temperature it can be outside for you to be able to still install signs?
Signs?
Yeah, like, street signs and CBD, for example.
As long as, as long as they're frozen, in, in the dead of winter, we can.
So, okay, all right, that's, and then-
Are you talking putting poles in, or just mounting, mounting signs?
Poles in, yeah, because I think there may be some, a lot you've already installed for the CBD, but this is-
Well, that's, that's a question I, we're gonna have to, you know, we're, we're talking about reviewing the, these signs, a lot of these poles are already in the ground.
Right.
So if we're gonna be changing, one thing about changing wording on signs, but if we're changing locations of signs, we're gonna be doing, you know, a lot of reborings and closing up old holes and the whole bit.
Yeah, and we'll get there when we get there, yeah.
Councilor Fusillo, anything?
Nothing.
Councilor, nothing, okay, thank you, Steve.
You're very welcome.
You're good to go. You're good to go.
I gotta get, no, face is crying.
Other, just items, we had asked for the memorials committee to go to look at naming the intersection of Shirley and Veterans, after David Green and Ramona Cooper, or to have some sort of memorial placed there, other than, you know, the trees, which the town did, which was, which was great. The memorials committee has met, they did come out with a far positive recommendation on that. I had asked them to go back to make sure, you know, our concern is to make sure we're doing something that is going to make the families happy, and, and that they're okay with what we were planning, so Phil Ronan did reach out, I know he has spoken with David Green's family, and I know he's reached out to Ramona Cooper's family, and I think David Green's family is very appreciative, and had some thoughts and concerns, and also has some suggestions, so we will be moving forward with that, and we will keep you posted as to when that might happen and how it will be commemorated. And the other item is the Dog Park dedication, which we want to dedicate that Dog Park after Councilor McDuffie, who was just instrumental and passionate about that in his time on the council, and it's very important to me that that is done, and we would like to have that done in the fall before winter comes, so we will work on that and have a specific date at our next meeting. On, well, we'll go to another round of public comment, since all the public, almost, except for John, who is-
John stands his trunk.
I have a way of clearing a room.
It's not you, it's us.
Are there comments, we'll go to Zoom first, are there comments on Zoom?
Karen Jarvis.
Yes, Karen, sorry to make you wait, and accept, you know, we're thinking of you constantly, and I know I can speak for the council, how much you and our thoughts and prayers.
Well, thank you for that. Karen Jarvis, please, me too. First of all, I want to tell, reach out to everybody sitting at that table who has reached out to me personally, I do appreciate it, and so does my family. A couple of things, I was part of the audience review committee in 2015, appointed by then town president Peter Gill. Again, Council President Luteri asked me to serve on this most current one, which I did too. There were two females and seven males on that, on that particular audience review committee, town government, business, finances, and architects, couple of architects, lawyer and nurse, you know, it was quite a, a, a mix-up of people. I personally, I'm, I'm giving my own personal thoughts, I personally went for the six-person council. At first, I wanted it to be the precincts, but the more I listened to people, and the more I listened to other people, I thought maybe the at-large would be better. The reason being, as Council President Luteri has alluded to many times, there just are not enough people that want to run in these different precincts, and I think it's because there'll be somebody who is currently the council person, and they don't want to run against them. Here I had, I'm sorry, Councilor Belcher had some competition. Other than Councilor Belcher, I do not believe there was any other competition. Councilor De Marco had competition a couple of years ago, when he first ran for at-large, but people are not running, and I don't know if it's because people are happy with the councils they have, or they just don't want to, as Council Munson has said, give that four-year commitment, that is a huge commitment. And yeah, you say you do it now, but what if your job moves you in two and a half years? Just a lot of thoughts. Please, these are my own thoughts, they're not the thoughts of the audience review committee or anybody else. I personally too want to thank Denise Quist, she has been wonderful to me, helpful, as always, and I do thank her very, very much, and thank you again to all of you, and the plant was absolutely gorgeous and appreciated.
Thank you, Karen, take care. Any other public comment on Zoom?
More than us?
Any other public comment on Zoom?
Susan Hitchcock, Brian, can you open, please?
Yep.
She got it. I did?
Suzanne.
You don't want to see my, you don't want to see my case, eh?
Put her up.
We didn't have her before.
You're all set.
Here we go. Here we go, we see you now.
Are you there?
Yeah, we see you now.
Hello, hello, thank you all. I'm Suzanne Hitchcock-Bryan. I'm increasing three up by the water tower, and in the past few days, I felt like I'd been about to go to Oz. I don't know if the rest of you have felt that, but wow, has it been windy up here. Honestly, I don't know how these people are working on top of water tower in this wind, but it's pretty clean. Also, planes are flying overhead right now, so my broadband might be a little unstable. I would just like to say that I'm very much against three of the recommendations by the ordinance review committee, ORC. ORC. Well, that's an apt acronym. I urge the council to vote no on recommendation 1A to change the constitution of the council to A-at-large. The chair of the ORC said real government is local, and well, what happens in three with the airport and Deer Island may not be the same as what happens in the other precincts. I urge the council to vote yes on decreasing the term of the counselors from four years to two years. And I urge no, 1B, to reduce the president to, to increase the president to four years. And it seems like that's kind of a power grab right now. It doesn't sit well with me. And if it's okay for the other counselors to be at two years, and okay for our U.S. representatives to be two years, I think it's okay for the president to be here two years. So I also urge no on the recall ordinance, and I defer to Abma Hone Wright, who submitted his comments to you for his brilliant elucidation, which matches my own reasoning. Thank you all. I appreciate it. My view is why we moved to winter, so I'm grateful to be here. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Anyone else on Zoom?
Uh, no.
John, would you like to make any comments?
I'd just like to finish my comment up on the White King Day. It's Friday, October 14th, not 15th, as the paper that I, that I suggested that I sent in. I'm waiting for further paperwork on the ID for the Zoom and the call-in number, because unfortunately, they're going to Zoom. I can't wait till they meet in person because it's, we have met at the state house over the past, let's see, 10-plus years, and I miss the contact with the people that I've gotten to know over the years. Also, in the paperwork that I did ask the town to put on their website, is chapter 90, section 14A, which is the White King law. That's an, that's just like an update on the existing pedestrian law, except that people with disabilities, they're at a greater disadvantage when they're crossing the roads. Also, I'd like to, I'd like to add that in the past, we were just talking about bicycles, the bicycles also have to follow the rules of the road. When they come up to a pedestrian in a crosswalk, they do have to stop. I haven't had any accidents in the time that I've lived over on Golden Drive, and I'm very fortunate, and I haven't heard of any either, and I like to keep it that way. So, and also, I have come across in the last few months, people with, with the power chairs, they are also at risk in a crosswalk because they sit much lower, and sometimes some of the cars are higher, and they, at a certain distance, they won't be able to see them. So I just wanted to bring that up. I appreciate that the TSAC committee and the past Deputy Chief Goodman have listened to some of my concerns and acted on them immediately, which is making travel for me and I hope everyone else much, much safer. Thank you.
Thank you, John. All right, we'll go to public relations. And again, as John has stated a couple of times, and we will reiterate, October is white can awareness month, and it will be celebrated on October 14th, and some people might see 15th, but it is the 14th. Also, I will ask, in October, the charter gives two specific periods of the year where we are required to have public forums, and we have a fall forum and a spring forum. The spring forum is usually a finance, it has to be a finance-related forum, and the fall forum is more about delivery of services by the town. So that fall forum will take place at our next scheduled meeting, which is October 18th, and it will be held at the D'Leo Senior Center. I will ask for a motion to suspend council rules in terms of time. What we will do, and what we have done in the past, is we will conduct our council meeting at 6:00, and then we will open the fall forum at 7:00. We will conduct a one-hour council meeting and then go into the fall forum. So do I have a?
Motion to suspend the rules.
A motion to suspend council rules by Consul DeMarco, second by Consul Fisillo.
You're rule breakers.
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
No, the ayes have it. And so that meeting on the 18th will begin at 6:00. Also, I want to thank, we have a incredibly good photography business in town called Beacon Photography. They are on Winthrop Street, and we had asked them to do, there's been over the past several months, some articles on Winthrop, and about, you know, that we're a nice town and we have a lot to offer. Beacon Photography has, at my request, done some.
This one's upside down.
Okay, well, in the back, we'll go to this one. There's an article from the Globe Magazine, which spotlights Winthrop. There was also an article in Luxury Travel, which spotlights Winthrop as the number three community in Massachusetts to live. And there's another on Winthrop rankings and how Winthrop does compared to other municipalities. These will be hung up here, hopefully in the Harvey Room, for people to enjoy. Again, I thank Beacon Photography and Consul Munson for his efforts, and again, appreciate it. And that's to all the, a lot of the good work that's done by the council to get Winthrop that type of recognition, and I thank all the counselors for that. Go around, are there any public relations? Consul Munson?
Thank you, President Luteri. I'm proud to do that project. This is a beautiful town, and we are climbing the ranks thanks to the efforts of the founding fathers, as well as all of us, and thanks to, obviously, the administration, and looking forward to more and more great changes. But the one PR piece I wanted to share was that this Friday, at the Beacon Photography, we're at the Beacon Gallery, from 4:00 to 5:30, we have conversations with the counselors, with Consul Flockhart, Consul DeMarco, and myself. We'll be having, giving people, we're inviting everyone in Winthrop to come, anyone that wants to come is welcome to, and we'll be talking about some of the proposed changes to the charter, to the ordinances, and then we'll be updating them with other TIPS, the TIPS project, et cetera. So looking forward to people coming and having an informal environment where they can speak interactively with all of us.
Starting at 4:00.
Starting at 4:00 on Friday.
Consul Belcher?
On Saturday, October 8th, from 11:00 to 3:00, at Ingleside, is Parks America's Fall Fair and Craft Fair.
Consul DeMarco?
On Friday, I had the honor of presenting Trudy from WSPA at her surprise retirement party with a citation. It was an incredible event, and her and her family have just done so much for this community. So I was absolutely honored to be there. Also, it's Italian Heritage Month, and if you haven't tried tripe before, I would highly recommend it, and enjoy the month.
Consul Flockhart?
I have nothing.
Vice President Majerow? Glenn speak?
Consul Belcher's birthday is also October.
Oh, oh, really?
Do I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Consul Belcher. And second by Consul Fisillo. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. We have adjourned.
Thank you, thank you.